All right, well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for that. I know it's a little backwards, but now they couldn't run away. So my name is Carolyn Peck. On behalf of the committee and the Board of Education and Dr. Spadaro, we welcome you to what is going to be a wonderful evening of celebration and recognition. I am so happy to see so many people here today. I want to introduce my co-chairs for this evening, Dean Rylowitz and Christine Keldar. As a classroom teacher for 25 years, I understand the feelings we have as educators when we work hard but feel our time and efforts may not be noticed or even appreciated. As a board member for five years, I have made it my mission to make this evening as special as possible and to let you all know that the Board of Education does notice and we do appreciate the sacrifices and dedication of everyone in this district. It takes a village, and you are our village.
As our award evening begins, we would like to acknowledge that last week, our president, Chris Schoolmaker, received the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Award at an award ceremony in North Rackland School District in recognition for the impact he has had as a member of the Board, especially his leadership, as well as commitment to the community as a whole. Thank you, Chris. A well-deserved award and recognition. We will begin by celebrating an elite group of professionals who have officially reached a major milestone: tenure. Let's be honest, earning tenure is no small feat. It takes three or four years of hard work, professional growth, and an uncanny ability to locate the one functioning whiteboard marker in the building. These teachers have shown creativity in their classroom, leadership in their schools, and perhaps the most importantly, the ability to keep smiling even when a student hands in a crumpled permission slip and insists it was like that when I got it. Tenure is not just a recognition of time served, it's a recognition of foundational members of our district. They are mentors, inventors, innovators, and sometimes unofficial school counselors, comedians, or tech support. To our newly-tenured teachers, you have earned in the Faculty Lounge of Legends. Your dedication makes a lasting difference, and we are so proud to officially welcome you to this next chapter of your career. All right, we're going to start off with Kayleen Bilu.
Next, we celebrate and recognize a very special group of people: our retiring faculty and staff, or as we like to call them now, graduates with a major in freedom and a minor in afternoon naps. Our retirees have seen it all: chalkboards became smart boards, cursive writing turned into keyboarding, and they've adapted through every trend, mandate, and educational acronym that came their way, whether it was NCLB, STEM, IEP, SEL, or whatever new thing we're piloting this semester. They've been mentors, role models, counselors, sometimes unofficial snack providers, and probably at least once, a stand-in for the school nurse. They've laughed with students, cried with parents, stayed late grading, and somehow managed to keep their plants alive in their classrooms longer than most students can keep a classroom pencil. Tenured teachers, those plants have to stay alive by the time you retire, just saying. To our retirees, you have left a legacy that will echo through the hallways long after the final bell rings. Your students may forget "I" before "E" except after "C," but they will never forget the way you made them feel: valued, encouraged, and capable of more than they believed. Now it's time for a well-earned break, one that doesn't end in June or start with a Monday alarm clock. We hope you enjoy every minute of sleeping in, reading for fun, and not having to answer to the phrase "I swear I turned that in on Google Classroom." This year, we have a total of 14 members of our school district retiring. All of their years of service in education total up to 336 years. As we say every year, if you're not certain who is retiring, just take a look at the room around. They are the ones that currently have the biggest smiles on their faces. So first up, Marcel Barbier, our groundskeeper, six years of service. Barbara Davenport, teacher, 16 years of service. Steve Stevens, our building maintenance leader, 18 years of service. Marcel Dugan Hassanflue, teaching assistant, 19 years of service. If anybody's here, you can come up for your plaque. Deborah Newman, teacher, 20 years of service. Ginger Long, teacher, 21 years of service. David Cook, teacher, 27 years of service. Kathy Highcade, teaching assistant, 27 years of service. Bonnie Markle, senior typist, 28 years of service. Diane Melville, teacher, 30 years of service. Greg Jones, teacher, 30 years of service. Kevin Mutz, teacher, 30 years of service. Dawn Delamater, teacher, 32 years of service. And last but not least, Tony Senkata, teacher, 32 years of service. The Thomas King Distinguished Service Award is aimed to identify and acknowledge the outstanding contributions put forth by our staff and establish a tradition of excellence. The Distinguished Service Award was created in 2010 by previous Rondau Valley Superintendent Rosario Augustaro. Thomas King, a longtime science teacher at the junior high school, was one of the first recipients of that award. In 2011, Thomas King unexpectedly passed away. Mr. King was well-respected by both colleagues and students alike, many who are in this auditorium today. Thomas King's time at Rondau Valley was so impactful to so many. This award has since been named after him in honor of the legacy he left behind. We will first invite the nominators of our award recipients to share what they wrote in their nomination letter. We do have the letters for you to read from if you do not have your original. Then we will invite our award recipient up to receive the traditional Thomas King Distinguished Award Medal of Honor. First, I'd like to invite Suzanne Medima. Did I say that right? Medima, I apologize. She nominated Mr. Russell Henze.
Yes.
Ooh, I got that one right. Did you need this? Or you got my hat, okay? Awesome. Yeah. Hold on, he's here.
Oh.
Sort of.
I'm impressed.
Mr. Henze, can you hear us? Mr. Henze, you might be muted. Can you hear us?
There we go.
Mr. Henze, we're just going to ask you that you need to really speak loudly when you talk, okay?
Very good.
Thank you. When I initially thought about my time at Rondau, so many of my teachers were very impactful, so I was almost, excuse me, I was almost spoiled for choice. But I felt very compelled to nominate Mr. Henze. He exemplifies the best qualities an educator can possess, and he demonstrates the lasting impact a teacher can have in the classroom and beyond. Mr. Henze is not only talented and skilled in his field, but has consistently brought his knowledge and expertise to his students and into the community. I had the privilege to be a student of Russell Henze when he was choir director at the high school, a position he held from 1985 to 1996. Not only did he teach us the rudiments of singing, but he literally helped each and every one of us to find our voice. He encouraged us and made us believe that we could achieve musically. Beyond that, he was convinced we could make music that other people wanted to hear, and that in turn made us strive to always better our performance. He made the music room a welcoming space for everyone. As a very shy student trying to navigate high school, this room was like a haven to me, and I have heard the same sentiment expressed by a number of my peers. Many of the pieces he taught us stay with me to this day, and the skills I learned from him make me feel confident to stand up and sing with any vocal group. A few years ago, Mr. Henze had a vision to organize an alumni chorus event at the Rondau Valley High School, bringing together all former students who had participated in the Rondau Chorus. He organized and conducted a very successful alumni chorus concert in 2019. This was such a joyful undertaking that participants immediately began discussing the next event. Unfortunately, COVID intervened. The second alumni chorus event took time to regroup and coordinate, but logistics and admin were undertaken by Kerhonkston Elementary Teacher Darlene Cummins with the assistance of retired Rondau teachers Rod and Lord Bastin. The organization of this event was complicated by the fact that Mr. Henze had relocated to Florida, but from there, participant lists were made and repertoire was chosen. In April 2024, we came together to perform a meaningful program combined with the current Rondau Valley High School band conducted by Randolph Loder and the Rondau Valley High School Chorus conducted by Juliana McCarthy. This concert was the culmination of Russ's overarching objective, which was to bring together current Rondau students in the music department with music department alumni to demonstrate how a love of music can last a lifetime, whether it is practiced professionally or for pure enjoyment. This was a grueling weekend involving rehearsal on Friday evening as well as all-day Saturday leading up to the concert. Russ's endurance was remarkable, especially since he had just been hospitalized for a week with pneumonia and was further exhausted from travel. Yet we all wanted to make this a special occasion, a day in which he could be proud of us all and by which we could show appreciation to him for all his teaching and inspiration. This day was even more personally significant for me because Mr. Henze allowed my son Seabran, who was then a seventh grader, to participate in the tenor section. My son came to know Russ as a member of Christ the King Church in Stone Ridge, where he often organized children's music and was director of the Sunday School Program for preteens and teens. By giving Seabran the task of some very challenging music, Russ showed himself as that true teacher who sees potential in a student, encourages him to try something new, and by doing so, makes him feel heard and special. After Seabran's participation in the alumni event in 2024, he was confident enough to perform a solo at the Junior High Spring Concert last year and to audition and secure a spot in the Junior High Select Chorus this year as an eighth grader. Mr. Henze's nurturing of Seabran's talent demonstrates that although retired, he is always a teacher, still recognizing that spark of musical interest and still helping a student find his or her voice. This is the mark of a lifelong educator and a superlative individual. I am forever grateful for the contribution to my growth and education Russell Henze has made on me personally and on Rondau and the wider community, and I can think of no more
Thank you very much. I didn't realize I was all of those things. I'm overwhelmed. Working at Rondau was not work. It was a pleasure. For 11 years, I had the privilege of working with many of the young people who are now teachers at Rondau. But it has been such a delight. Rondau has always had a very special place in my heart, and we were able to reunite again by doing the Alumni Chorus twice, and that was a nice privilege. But the work that I did was accomplished because of the interest that the young people themselves had. And the faculty, when I was teaching there, the faculty was so cooperative, and we all worked together. And I feel that is the exact same thing that is happening now in Rondau, and it's very exciting to experience it. I read the announcements that are made, and I'm so thrilled with the many things that are happening at Rondau. And I thank so many people that are there. I especially thank Randy Loder, who was going to super support, especially at that point when I came in and helped for a short period of time. And I don't know how much to say, except that you all, I hope, realize what a fantastic school district you have. And I thank you, thank you for this honor, and I'm humbled for sure.
Thank you so much, and congratulations, Mr. Henze. Next, I would like to call up Vanessa Green, who nominated Diane Bracklow, as well as
Good evening, everybody. I'm Vanessa Green. I'm the PTA President at Marble Town Elementary. I don't love public speaking, so please bear with me. I'm going to just read the letter I submitted and try not to cry. It is with great admiration and enthusiasm that I nominated Diane Bracklow, our exceptional elementary school secretary for the prestigious Thomas King Award. As the PTA President and a daily witness to her unwavering commitment, I cannot imagine a more deserving individual. Diane exemplifies every quality this award represents: dedication, integrity, compassion, and an unrelenting work ethic. She is truly the heartbeat of our school, whether it's greeting students and families with a warm smile, supporting teachers with patience and grace, or keeping the school running smoothly behind the scenes. She does it all with unmatched care and professionalism. Her love for the school radiates through everything she does. From early mornings to late evenings, she goes above and beyond the call of duty, not because she has to, but because she genuinely loves our school community. Staff, students, and family alike adore her. She's not just our secretary, she's a trusted friend, a dependable teammate, and an irreplaceable pillar of our support. When she's not in the office handling countless tasks with efficiency and kindness, you'll often find her behind a camera, capturing the heart and soul of our school, documenting the joy, the growth, and the milestones that make our day so memorable. Her photos tell the story of our school one smile at a time. Diane helps whenever she is needed, whether it's sending out communication for the PTA, assisting with tech issues for one of our events, or capturing those events through her camera lens. Over the years, she has been a true asset and backbone within our PTA. Working alongside Diane these last six years has been one of the greatest privileges of my time at Marble Town. Her spirit is the kind that lifts others up, makes challenges feel manageable, and reminds us all why we do what we do. She's not just an outstanding secretary, she's a shining example of what it means to serve with your whole heart. Diane is truly such a wonderful person, representing not only Marble Town Elementary, but the Rondau District as a whole.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Board and everyone for doing this, and I love this event. People work their hearts out for a career in education, and they ought to have a really warm send-off. Our jobs are hard. We deal with people, and we deal with the highs and the lows, the people that we work with, like Diane, who I'm going to speak to for a second. It's like, what do you say about the person who you work with all day long, every day, and you're experiencing not just your work, but your life with them? The personal pieces, the things that we go through as individuals, everything like that, it means a lot. And so I thank you. I also say it's nice to recognize the newly-tenured teachers. You've earned that, and that's how it should be. This is tough, and you go through your three or four years and you get here, good. You should be recognized for it, and you should do it here publicly. And congratulations to those of you, and I hope that all the newly-tenured teachers pay attention to the words that are said about the folks who are receiving these awards, because most of them have been here for a while, and they certainly have got something that we can all learn from. However, I'll say this: with the ones who've been tenured from my building, I've already learned a lot from you, so you're well on your way. So here's the backstory on this Thomas King. Vanessa is in the building all the time, and she's the PTA President, and she does everything, and she's always organizing things and making sure things happen. And so I had put in a few people for Thomas King's, and then I called Debbie Barbiani the day that these things are due, and she's like, "Oh, Andy, yeah, I've got that one, and I've got that one for you." And she goes, "Oh, yeah." And then Vanessa nominated Diane, and I was like, "Oh, dear God." Because Diane and I talk all the time, and I know she's got several more years here, and so do I, and we're going to hopefully be working together for a bunch more years. And I usually kind of like wait until people are towards the end of their careers to do these types of things. So I'd always planned on giving Diane one, but I was like, "Oh, my gosh." And I'm like, "Debbie, what time does this need to be due?" She says, "4:30." Of course, with all the things going on in the day, we started it at 3:30, so here we go. This is what we came with. This morning, I learned that the Marble Town President, PTA President nominated Diane Bracklow for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. If anyone at Marble Town deserves this award, it is Diane. I think of Diane every time I consider this award, and I have always planned to nominate her, but I tend to do this to folks who are close to retirement, and I know Diane plans to work for several more years. In this case, someone recognized how much she does for Marble Town School and nominated her for this award. There's been little time today to gather my thoughts, so this probably will not be the most eloquent nomination, still on hold, but I'm making the 4:30 PM deadline. I did, 4:28. Diane Bracklow is the Lead Administrative Assistant at Marble Town. She's worked here for more than 25 years. That means she knows everything about everything. If a teacher, staff member, administrator, parent, or community member or student need to know something, they start with Diane, because she either will know the answer or she can tell you who can. I'm eternally grateful that Diane is our Lead Administrative Assistant. I'm further grateful that her desk is just outside my office, because I need her many, many times each day, and I am sure that at night she probably wakes up in a cold sweat hearing my voice go, "Diane!" Because she hears it every day, probably haunts her at night. Diane is very effective with the students, maybe "affective" with an "A" is more appropriate because she loves the students. In fact, Diane is one of the first people incoming kindergarten students and families meet. She greets them with a warm smile in May during our screenings. She takes their photos, answers parents' questions, and makes sure each prospective incoming kindergarten student leaves with a bag of goodies. In doing so, she helps them feel welcome and gets them excited for the school year while reducing the angst of the parents. During the child's four years at Marble Town, it is Diane who makes sure each child's birthday is recognized. It is Diane who takes photos of students during classroom events and assembly. It is Diane who helps book the field trips. It is Diane who supports the PTA activities. It's Diane who creates the keepsake programs for music concerts, fan-over-dance performances, and graduations. She's the person who thinks of all the little things that everyone else forgets, so that these events are wonderful for our students and families. She consoles students when they are sick or if they're next to her waiting to see the principal. Further, I have it on very good authority that Diane communicates regularly with the big man, and by that I mean Santa Claus. For years, Diane and her elves, and I see one of her elves is over here to my right, have worked tirelessly under Santa's direct have worked tirelessly under Santa's direction to ensure that all families have gifts for their children during the holidays. When it comes time for our students to graduate from Marble Town, it is Diane who makes the balloon arch for our last-day clapout. In short, she takes care of students and their families before they start at Marble Town, all the way through and beyond when they finish at Marble Town. Diane acts with the same sense of caring and grace with our faculty and staff. She remembers birthdays, and also often is the first person to know about a birth, an engagement, a wedding, and she tells me. As staff member, she is also among the first to help console a staff member when they face unfortunate circumstances. Each day, she interfaces with almost everyone in the building and countless families. Those interactions are just almost exclusively positive, but Diane remains calm, compassionate, even when others lose their composure. Marble Town prides itself for being a warm, welcoming, nurturing school, and she's the one who sets the tone. On a personal note, I'm charged with leading the school, but Diane is charged with leading me. When you think about it, Diane deserves this medal, or a Diamond Encrusted Gold Medal, for putting up with me every single day with such grace. Literally every aspect of our school is touched by her, directly or indirectly, and it's fair to say that I and our school would be lost without her. Her example is one that should not only be emulated by other administrative assistants, but by people in general. She's a consummate professional who cares deeply for our school district and the students, families, and staff members who are part of our extended school community. So, thank you, Board of Education, for recognizing Diane Bracklow with this award.
Ms. Bracklow, please step forward for your Medal of Honor. You don't have to. It's up to you.
I just want to thank Vanessa for nominating me. You have no idea how much fun you have been to work with. It's a pleasure when you come into the building and you bring all these amazing things to our school. You bring Two by Two Zoo, which you know I just love. I can take pictures of all the animals. It's just, it's a delight to see a PTA that actually cares about students and brings things that are welcoming and friendly to our school. And Andy, you know, thank you for having me as your secretary. I know that sometimes it's hard to run the building, so I really appreciate being there. I hope you'll keep me for four more years, maybe five, I don't know. My husband and I, we grew up here. We went to Rondau, we graduated from Rondau, so did our children, and now our grandchildren. I love this district, I love this community, and it just, I'm really proud to have this. I didn't expect this, but thank you, thank you for being a loving community and having me in it. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite up Heather Crease and student Heaven Connor, who are nominated Kim Gorney.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Heaven couldn't be here tonight, but she did create a beautiful little video in honor of Ms. G., as the students fondly call her. So, it is my absolute pleasure to say a few words about Kim. I've had the honor of working with her the past five years. The kiddos fondly call her Ms. G., and she is a remarkable speech therapist, a dedicated professional, and a truly compassionate human being. For the past 17 years, she has served the students of our district, working tirelessly with children from kindergarten to the sixth grade. Whether it's in her therapy sessions, the after-school clubs that she's led, or simply passing in the hallway, Kim always brings a warm smile and unwavering support. She's not only an outstanding colleague, but a devoted mother, daughter, and partner, and she's raised her beautiful family with the same care that she brings to her work every day. Tonight, we're honoring Kim with the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award, and this recognition couldn't be more deserved. Her commitment, kindness, and quiet strength have made a lasting impact on so many lives, including mine. Congratulations, Ms. G. We are so lucky to have you and to celebrate with you tonight with lots of pride and gratitude. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Christine Lachlan and Andrew Davenport, who nominated Kathy Highgate.
Where do I start? A number of Rondau retirees have been asked by Christina Lachlan, who presently has the honor of working with Kathy Highgate, to share their insights into her skills and contributions, which make her worthy of such a distinguished award. Ms. Highgate is so impressive that it truly takes a team of knowledge to acknowledge her accomplishments. Not only is she a principal's dream, because she will do anything asked of her, her values reach even further than MES. She is an essential member of the Marble Town community, with all the years of service that she has given to the summer camp, families, and children in that community at large. Kathy can do anything, and she does. What makes her so awesome is not only that she will do anything, but she does it with a smile, love in her heart, and complete dedication. For example, Kathy is always willing to do recess duty outside, no matter how cold it is. It's a true story. She doesn't care. When she disciplines a child, she is firm, but always loving, and that is why the children listen and respect her so much. Her good humor and positive attitude makes her a pleasure to be around, not to mention her awareness of the children's needs that she teaches and her mastery of the subject matter. We can all say so much more, but we trust you get the picture. No one is more deserving than Kathy Highgate. On a personal note, I have known Kathy for over 30 years, and she does, she deserves this award. She brings joy to our school, she loves the children with all her heart. And she's also retiring this year, and I'm going to miss her tremendously. She comes into the building every morning and greets me, and sometimes I say, "Hey, Kathy, what would you like to do today?" She fills in for people when I'm missing staff in a heartbeat. She will do anything that she can to make the day easier for our building, and for that, I am very appreciative. Kathy, we're going to miss you, and you deserve this award. Thank you.
It's with great pleasure that I nominate Kathy Highgate for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. For those of you who know Kathy, she is a character and a wonderful employee who is completely devoted to our children and our school district, and she bleeds blue and white. An ideal teaching assistant is one that you can put into any situation and feel comfortable that everything's going to be fine. Kathy ticks all those boxes. If Tina's out for the day, no problem. No, the first-grade teacher's out for the day, Kathy will take it. No PE teacher, no problem. Kathy's there. She can manage a class while also keeping the instruction moving forward. Kathy Highgate possesses that kind of versatility. Kathy is extremely effective with students. She makes her expectations clear, she's firm, yet always loving. She looks to praise students when they are doing things well, yet she is willing to pull a student aside and redirect them as needed. Kathy is also extremely safety-conscious. With these qualities, she does an outstanding job running the first-grade playground cafeteria, helping with morning drop-off, afternoon pickup. When it's time to line up at the end of recess, Kathy just calls the kids in, they come running, they line up, she just says, "Flat tire," and all of a sudden you hear a whole grade of kids go, "Sssssss," and they're quiet, and they're ready to walk back into the school and make that transition. While her work outside of the classroom is superb, she's equally effective assisting in the classroom instruction. And I want to thank Tina and Colleen Boardman. They have worked with Kathy over the last few years in the co-talk class in first grade, and it's just a wonderful environment for students to learn. Regarding long-term contributions to our school district and community, Kathy's done so much. In our community, she has coached youth sports, volunteered for countless events, she's dedicated to our fire department and her church. At Marble Town, she supported the town's after-school programs for many years. Thereafter, she worked with Lisa Ojaca's Fresh Start and Fabulous Finish program. And then, in addition to that, she's been an active member of our PTA for many years when her children attended Marble Town. So, this is really interesting. I was walking the little lobby, and there were these little tiles for all the people who made enormous contributions as a PTA member or staff member. And so, I was looking at that a couple of weeks ago, and Kathy has a tile on the wall that she earned in 2001. Since then, she's done so much more, including being a force in our building safety team. Further, Kathy helps with our annual toy drive, which supports our Marble Town families around the holidays. Clearly, Kathy's an important part of the fabric that makes up the school community. My favorite thing about Kathy, though, is her personality. She's a character, she's a wallflower, she's willing to speak her mind and does so, she's unapologetically herself, and it's fun. I love this about her. I'm not going to lie. I'm a little scared when I'm late for recess duty. As principal, you need to be open to different perspectives. Growth only happens when you face new ideas and new information, and when you have an employee like Kathy who is solution-oriented and who views things through the prism of what's best for kids, you cannot help but appreciate their input. That's Kathy. We don't always agree, but I value her input and the good place it comes from. So, clearly, she's a tremendous asset and wonderful teaching assistant, person who's contributed to our school's district and community for many years. She will be sorely missed, but not that much because she's coming back and substitute teaching as soon as possible. I wish her well in retirement and look forward to seeing her next year. Congratulations, Kathy.
Kathy?
Those of you that know me know I love to talk, but I'm going to make this quick. I made two really good decisions as a young parent. My first decision was that I was going to stay home until each one of my kids entered school, and I did that. The second greatest decision I made was to, when I was ready to enter the workforce, is to apply at Rondau Valley Central Schools as a teaching assistant. I could never think of another job that I would have enjoyed more than the one that I've had for 27 years. I love it so much, I was going to retire last year, but I was having so much fun with Tina, I decided to stay another year, and I'm glad I did. The last thing I want to say is this, I love kids, but I can tell you that I have learned so much more from them than I ever could have taught them. Thank you.
It took me a minute to compose my thoughts. I was not ready to speak, nobody said that was part of the deal tonight, so I was just going to sneak on out, but I just needed to take a moment. My friend Heather Creese, my colleague and my friend, nominated me, and I was completely floored by it. It was unexpected. If you know anything about speech pathologists or related service providers, we're really used to just kind of getting in and out and being chameleons and kind of doing what we need to do, and we kind of live a life of not being noticed all that much, which I guess in a way can be good, but it can get really lonely sometimes. And when Heather came to our district five years ago, I just knew she was going to be one of my people. She was going to be in that tribe, and she just, we work really well together, we support a lot of the same students. And I knew that we had a mutual respect for each other, but to read a letter, and she didn't get to read the full letter tonight because she did have to run out to a prior engagement, but I have found over the last week since she sent it to me, when she found out I was going to be recipient, and if I'm having just a bad moment, or just, you know, having, just kind of stuck in the day, I just kind of pull it up on my computer and even just read a couple of phrases or sentences, and I'd be like, "Okay, I got this, like it's all good." This is my 30th year doing what I do. It's been a really long and winding road. I'm so grateful that it led me back to Rondau. I am a Rondau graduate, 1989. Some of my dearest friends who I met within these walls are actually here to support me tonight, some of whom work in the district, others who are just fantastic lifelong friends. And I'm just really grateful that the winding road led me back here. This is where I plan to be for the next, I think, five years, maybe, fingers crossed when I retire, but I just really wanted to thank Heather for recognizing me and for all of my coworkers and people who have supported me and see me, and I don't feel as invisible, so, thank you.
I'd like to invite Jackie Venostal up, who nominated Kathy Turner.
This is a wonderful night. All these stories about community are really inspiring, and I would like to add another one to the list. So, I would like to thank the committee for considering Kathy Turner for this award. Kathy is much, much more than our school librarian. She's a champion for students, a program innovator, department liaison, a member of just about every building-level team, a teacher leader, and most importantly, she's the glue that holds our building together, so thank you, Kathy, for that. Students rate the library as their favorite special year after year. This has a lot to do with the engaging activities Mrs. Turner plans, but the real reason is that students find Mrs. Turner to be a caring adult they can confide in and rely on. A champion for all students, Mrs. Turner is one of the most requested staff mentors at our school. Mrs. Turner routinely and skillfully employs restorative practices, strategies for conflict resolution, and de-escalation. Many students keep in touch with Mrs. Turner after leaving our school, a testament to the deep connections she makes with them. We can thank Mrs. Turner for several innovative programs at Kerr Huxton, the Crown The Crown Jewel is Lightbulb Library, a research-based program available to students with above-level reading performance. Students in the program are able to extend their research skills, allowing the classroom teacher more time to dig in with students who need additional support. After-school programs are another area where Mrs. Turner has led the way. She has created our most popular after-school clubs, including Reading and Writing Club and Literature and Cinema Club. Mrs. Turner works with our physical education teacher and New York State Police to coordinate a bike safety rally at our school, providing students with an opportunity to learn about bike safety and acquire resources like bicycle helmets. She's one of the teachers running the No Place for Hate program with second and third-grade students, and this year, they have created a peer mentor program and made major contributions to our school food backpack program. In addition to a play they'll be doing on recess and kindness in the spring. They'll be attending the regional No Place for Hate event in New York City in May, and I'd like to congratulate No Place for Hate and Mrs. Turner and Ms. Turner that our program earned a coveted gold star this year for going above and beyond. So nice job on that. As department liaison, Mrs. Turner manages all of the duties related to that position. She's an excellent communicator, ensuring that all of her colleagues around the district receive the information they need. And in addition, she's a lead member of several school committees, including Student Resource Team, School Improvement Team, and Safety Team. Our Student Resource Team was created after a discussion at Safety Team several years ago, and Mrs. Turner was a part of those discussions, a big reason why we decided a specials teacher should be a part of the team. Specials teachers work with every student in the building, positioning them to be effective mentors. As our special representative, Mrs. Turner has been a force for student social-emotional growth and our primary student mentor. Mrs. Turner represents specials teachers on our school improvement team and has been instrumental in supporting various events. Most recently, she played a major role in getting our Literacy and STEAM Parent Engagement Night together, as well as helping to prepare a table for No Place for Hate team. She also supported a SIT initiative called Crib Visits, where teachers could sign up to visit classrooms to share ideas for reading instruction, classroom management, math strategies, and more. Teachers see Mrs. Turner as a leader, so her support of this initiative meant a great deal. Mrs. Turner was enthusiastic about what she learned while watching a first-grade reading lesson, and this inspired her to embed phonics skills in her work at that grade level. Mrs. Turner has been a leader on our school's safety team for many, many years. We're very lucky to have her with us earlier this year when we had an evacuation to the Kerr-Hunson Firehouse. Her leadership and calm demeanor helped to expedite dismissal from that location, and she's currently helping our team revise safety plans based on our experience, assemble new go-bags, and develop other preparedness materials. In closing, all of this dedicated and talented, all of the dedicated and talented teachers and staff at Kerr-Hunson, Kathy rises above the others as a teacher leader. She's the beating heart of our school, and her leadership helps to support everyone fortunate enough to work with her. I'd like to thank Kathy for her unwavering dedication and progressive mindset. As a school principal, I recognize that I'm eternally thankful for all the things she brings to our school community, and I hope that you agree she embodies all the characteristics we value in Thomas King Award recipient. Thank you, Mrs. Turner.
I just wanted to say that I came to Rondell 26 years ago. My daughter was nine-month-old, and I was nervous and afraid. I had worked six years elsewhere and loved my previous school. There is nothing like working at Rondell. I have 26 years in. I'm 31 years as an elementary school librarian, and I don't see myself going anywhere anytime soon. I'm fortunate enough to work with my daughter now. She teaches first grade, and to watch her grow as a teacher has made me be a better teacher, and I just, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
I'd like to invite up Cynthia Murphy, who nominated Joseph DeLassio.
I am happy to recognize Joseph DeLassio for the Thomas King Award. Having had the pleasure of working alongside Joe for several years, I can confidently attest to his exceptional abilities and unwavering commitment to the success of his students. Joe wears many hats: husband, father, coworker, teacher, friend, and a new one, soon-to-be grandpa. Congratulations, Joe and Anne-Marie. Joe's family's first attitude is admirable and most certainly what makes him an extraordinary special education teacher. Joe has been a valued part of our district for over 25 years, and his experience as a teacher since 1988 has equipped him with a wealth of knowledge and expertise. He has played a pivotal role in various initiatives, including the inception of the night school program, which has provided countless students with the opportunity to continue their education outside of traditional hours. His work as a wise mentor and a new teacher mentor demonstrates his commitment to fostering a supportive environment for both students and colleagues alike. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, Joseph has also served as a consultant teacher, where he has effectively collaborated with other educators to enhance the learning experiences of students with special needs. He addresses diverse student needs and inclusion practices. His dedication to independent studies, home tutoring, and a region's preparation course has helped many students achieve their academic goals. And his enthusiasm to chaperone school events showcases his commitment to being involved in the community.
One of Joseph's most admirable qualities is his continued connection with students even after they graduate. He goes above and beyond to maintain relationships, providing guidance and support as they transition into adulthood. Though there have been many examples of this over the years, one that stands out to me is a student who was displaced, living at family house, struggling with school, classes, and friends. Joe was always there to offer help with schoolwork, advice, and ear to listen, and food if hungry, whatever was needed. Just recently, Joe took time out of his busy schedule to visit her at her job, of which he helped her get, just to check in. This is just one of many such interactions that make Joe so special. This unique ability to connect with students both in and out of the classroom sets him apart as an educator who truly cares about their well-being and success. Moreover, Joseph is always willing to lend a helping hand to his colleagues. A coworker in her first year at Rondell needed an overhead projector. Yes, that's that old. One was not to be found anywhere. Who found her one? Joe. He is always the first one to share a colorful anecdote to spearhead celebrations for life events, birthdays, baby showers, retirements, and collect funds for families and coworkers in need. Joe has a collaborative spirit and positive attitude that creates a supportive atmosphere and encourages teamwork and professional growth. He is a reliable resource for fellow teachers, always ready to share his insights and strategies to enhance student learning.
In conclusion, we believe that Joe is an outstanding recipient of the Thomas King Award. His extensive experience, dedication to students' success, and collaborative nature has and will continue to make a significant impact on the lives of students and coworkers alike. Joe, keep shining.
Keep shining, Joe. We love you.
I had no idea it was that nice. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I prepared nothing, but I will say the following: My wife loves that I come here because I get to talk to people every day, which means I don't talk that much at home, hopefully. When I see people in the hallway, I always say, "Good morning." And I hear, "How are you doing?" "Living the dream." They say it sarcastically. I tell you what, this is a dream for me. My daughter, we petitioned the board because we're not residents of the district. It's never going to happen. It's never going to happen. Well, it did happen. We petitioned the board, we wrote letters, we emailed, and finally, the board relented, changed their policy, allowed us to bring our daughter to school. She graduated last year. Science research program, AP classes, 30 credits, physics major at Plattsburgh. I'm very lucky to be here. I'm very lucky to work with people who I absolutely love. I'm very lucky to go home to my wife, who tolerates me mostly. And I appreciate every minute I've been here, and you have no idea what a far cry this is for my first real adult job, working on a loading dock as a teamster at 3:00 in the morning in February in Maybrook, New York. So, this is a dream, and I will tell you now, the Rondell students are special. This community is special, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
I invite Jackie Van Oostel back, who nominated Shannon Van Norman.
I get to talk about two really exceptional colleagues, so this is really exciting. I am really excited to talk about Shannon Van Norman, so buckle up, there's a lot in this letter jammed in. From the moment Shannon began her career at Rondell Valley, it was clear she was special. At that time, Shannon was a special education teacher assigned to the 15-1 program for grades two and three. Her skill as a teacher of reading was clear. She possessed a unique ability to ignite a passion for reading in her students. Her enthusiasm, creativity, and dedication transformed the way her students approached learning, not just in reading, but all aspects of education. When a reading position opened up, it was an easy decision to hire Shannon. She goes above and beyond to ensure that each student feels valued, understood, and supported. She tailors her teaching methods to suit individual learning styles, making learning accessible and engaging for everyone. Her patience, kindness, and unwavering belief in her students' potential have inspired confidence and instilled a love of reading that will undoubtedly benefit them for years to come. Beyond her exceptional teaching skills, Shannon also serves as a role model, demonstrating the importance of curiosity, resilience, and lifelong learning. Her passion for literature and learning is infectious, encouraging students to explore new worlds, expand their horizons, and discover the joy of reading for pleasure. In a world where educators play such a pivotal role in shaping the future, Shannon stands out as a shining example of excellence. Her impact extends far beyond the classroom, leaving indelible mark on the lives of her students, their families, and our school. When our school improvement team discussed how we would address phonemic awareness skills, Shannon was our go-to expert. She recommended some options, then worked over the summer with colleagues from Marble Town to vet them. From that work, we acquired Haggerty, and the results have been incredible. When Orton Gillingham training became available, it was clear our teachers needed a resource to support implementation in the classroom that they could easily follow. Enter Ufly. Shannon's recommendation of that resource has been no less than transformative for our reading program, and I cannot thank her enough. Shannon provided the training our teachers needed to use Ufly and continues to provide support as needed. Beyond all of this, Shannon provides training for our teaching assistants so that they can implement grade- or class-level fast bridge interventions. But wait, there's more. Shannon is also the vice president of our PTA and one of the PBIS coordinators for our school. She's on our school improvement team and instructional support team. Not only that, she has three daughters that are involved with sports year-round, so I don't know when you sleep, Shannon, but you're here every day, so that's great. Shannon plans and executes literacy night, STEAM night, and is planning a color run and craft fair for June. In closing, I have a hard time thinking of anyone who has had the impact Shannon has had on our school and academic program over the years. Her influence goes beyond our walls, and she is a well-regarded colleague across the district. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to Shannon for her tireless efforts, unwavering dedication, and profound influence. She's truly an amazing reading teacher, and we are incredibly grateful for the positive impact she has had on our lives. I hope you agree that Shannon Van Norman embodies all of the characteristics we value in our Thomas King Award recipients. Thank you, Shannon.
I wasn't really planning on speaking, but I'd just like to say thank you so much to Jackie and the committee for this award. I've had the opportunity to work at KES for the last 18 years. I'm privileged to be a part of the Rondell community and being a reading teacher. My three girls love everything about this district. We're involved in everything we possibly can be, including PTA and sports galore, for sure. I am thankful for my KES family. Thank you so much.
I'd like to invite up Alice Goulian and Colleen Boardman, who nominated Diane Melville. Oh, and Andy Davenport. Sorry, Andy.
It is my honor to nominate Diane Melville for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. I had the pleasure of working with Diane Melville, first as her teaching assistant and currently as a fellow kindergarten teacher. Diane is the ideal kindergarten teacher. Her classroom is built on the foundation of love, comfort, and trust. From the moment you walk into Diane's room, you can feel her passion for making all those who enter her room feel the magic of kindergarten, whether it is through her ventriloquist mastery, using her puppet mascot, Muzzy, or her beautiful singing voice. She understands the needs of each and every individual student and personally goes above and beyond to meet the needs of both, meet the needs both in and outside of the classroom. Diane is a teacher who will always have extra snacks in her room in case a child is without one. Diane is the type of teacher who spends hours upon hours shopping for student supplies in order to ensure each student has the necessary learning tools to be successful each day. She dedicates her time to make sure that her students will not only be successful in their kindergarten year, but will also experience the magic that every kindergartner should feel in their first year of school. I was fortunate to be Diane's teaching assistant when I first started working at Marble Town. She not only made me fall in love with the career even more, but she made me do so in the middle of the pandemic. It was my desire to be a teacher like Diane with a classroom of my own. Thanks to her guidance, I was hired as a teacher at Marble Town. I have carried so many of Diane's techniques, strategies, and genuine love for teaching into my own classroom. She taught me everything, including things I didn't need, I didn't know I needed to know. Any successes I have as a classroom teacher, I owe to her. Her contributions to the district go beyond the classroom. She has been a mentor to me and to others. Also, she has helped countless students successfully make the transition to kindergarten by participating in programs like Story Hour and Summer Jump Start. To say that Diane Melville is a distinguished kindergarten teacher would be an absolute understatement. Diane is the magic of kindergarten. It is her last year at Marble Town, and I cannot think of a more fitting nominee for this distinguished award.
Colleen Boardman couldn't be here tonight. She's the co-talk teacher who works with Diane Melville. She wrote a wonderful piece here about Diane, which is a lot better than mine, so I'm going to share hers. It is with immense admiration and gratitude that I nominate Diane Melville for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award as she prepares to retire this year. Diane has been a cornerstone of Rondell School District, leaving an indelible mark on her students, families, colleagues through her extraordinary dedication and passion for teaching. Over the past five years, I've had the privilege to co-teach with Diane, and I can say without hesitation that she embodies the very best of what a kindergarten teacher should be. Diane is the pinnacle of teaching with a magical ability to connect with every child in a way that truly reaches them. She understands children on a deep developmental level, recognizing how each one learns best, whether through play, songs, visuals, or manipulatives. Diane tailors her approach to meet each child's unique needs. She doesn't believe in teaching every child the same way. Instead, she brings a playful spirit to her classroom, using art messes, sigils... using art messes, singing, hands-on activities, to make learning a joyful adventure. The children adore her warmth and creativity, often arriving on the first day eager to become a Melville monkey. Every student who passes through her classroom leaves as a more confident and curious learner, thanks to her remarkable effectiveness. Diane's influence extends far beyond her classroom, shaping the teaching practices of everyone fortunate enough to work with her. I've learned so much from her in our five years together, from the way she phrases instructions to make them clear for young minds, to the importance of learning through art and play. Her approach is sometimes called "old-school" by Diane herself, but it's anything but outdated. It's timeless. It's inspiring. It also reminds us all of the power of play-based learning. Colleagues often leave her room in awe, saying, "Wow, that's a kindergarten teacher." Diane's legacy will live on through the countless educators she has mentored, including myself. Her methods and wisdom will continue to guide us as we carry forward her passion for teaching in our own classrooms. Diane has gone above and beyond to support students, families, outside regular classroom hours. Over the years, she has dedicated her time to programs like Kindergarten Story Hour and Kindergarten Jump Start. In these settings, she shares the joys of learning with children by making it fun and engaging. And her activities sparks excitement, curiosity, ensuring that by the first day of school, her students are eager to join her class. Diane's commitment to these programs has created lasting memories for families, fostering a love of learning that extends far beyond the school day. Her efforts have built a strong foundation for countless children in our community. Diane Melville has brought so much happiness and cherished memories to the Rondau Valley School District during her remarkable career. As a veteran teacher, she has created lifelong learners in both her students and her colleagues. Every child who passes through her classroom and every adult who has had the pleasure of working alongside her is better for it. Diane's dedication, creativity, and unwavering commitment to our students makes her truly deserving candidate for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. We will miss her dearly, but her legacy will continue to inspire us all.
So you would think it'd be easy to get up and stand and talk to people, but my people are this big, and for thirty years, I've had the pleasure of working here. I came into a classroom with a shoebox of broken crayons, eight puzzles with missing pieces, and I said to myself, "How am I gonna do this? How am I going to do this?" And I looked to my colleagues around me, to my administrators, and they were always there to help. But more importantly, to my door every day came those little faces. And when I looked at them, I said, "How can I not? How can I not do this? How can I not instill in these little humans the importance of learning, the importance of exploring, and the importance of loving the world around them?" I'm still learning from them. But today, when we counted one hundred and fifty-one days, Colleen and I looked at them, and we said, "One hundred and fifty-one days? And we still..." And they screamed back, "Love you." And I will always hold that dear. There's so many people that I have to thank for this. So a kindergarten lesson is that I have to share, and I have to share this. And I share it with my family, who have lots of patience in their pockets, because that's what they've needed over the thirty years. I share it with Alice, and Annie, and Colleen, and Andrew, and the other people that stood up here and warmly accepted this. It means a lot. I'm a little overwhelmed and very much humbled, but thank you all. Thank you.
I'd like to invite up Shannon Moisey, and there is a long list here, including, I know, yes, Lee, who nominated Dawn Delamater. So whoever's here for that. Okay. Do you need this?
Thank you, everyone. So I'm here on behalf of our sixth-grade team at the Intermediate School to nominate or to celebrate Dawn Delamater tonight as a recipient for the 2025 Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. In her thirty-two years of service to the Rondau Valley Central School District and community, Dawn has demonstrated her unwavering dedication to the academic success of hundreds of students and their families. Dawn's passion for her craft and her commitment to providing students with outstanding educational experiences has left an enduring mark on not only the district and her colleagues, but the students and families who are lucky enough to have gotten to know her. Dawn has served as an educator for the Rondau Valley Central School District for the entirety of her teaching career, and it is tremendous to think about the hundreds of students who she has made an impact on over the course of decades. As a native of Stone Ridge, she is known for her commitment to the community and her unwavering dedication to the district. She was also a student at this very district, providing that unique perspective as someone who has such extensive knowledge of the history of the district and this area. Dawn has proven to be extremely passionate about teaching, utilizing her natural ability and skills to keep students interested and motivated as learners. Her talent for teaching in a way that supports students of all skill levels demonstrates her flexibility and capability as an instructor. Dawn has also demonstrated her care for students as a club advisor for various clubs over the years, including Poetry Club, Colorful Creations Club, and the Intermediate School Gander Gazette newspaper. She's also served as a director and advisor for various school plays over the years, supporting students' development in the creative arts. As a colleague, Dawn quickly distinguished herself as a devoted and thoughtful team member and confidant. Dawn has such a caring and kind personality, and her kindness and authentic friendliness has provided so many of her peers with support, friendship, guidance, and strength. Dawn embodies the qualities that make an educator truly outstanding, and she does so in an effortless way. The district will truly feel the loss of her warmth, her compassion, and her expertise, but will forever be impacted by her efforts as a teacher, advisor, advocate, and so many other roles. We cannot think of a person more deserving of this award or someone who better exemplifies the qualities that the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award stands for.
So Dawn is not here tonight, and it's not Friday. The reason I mention Fridays is because she's very well-known for our Good News Fridays, which was an opportunity for students throughout the years to come up with the good news that they found. And if you look at numbers, and you think about thirty-two years, and the average sixth grader is eleven, I would say that her students, her first group of students, are forty-three right now. And then when you think about the impact that all of us have over the years, I think Dawn demonstrates that. You don't have to stand, because Dawn's not here, but I am very honored to be speaking on her behalf, and thank you for coming out tonight.
I'd like to call up Kaylee Bowden, who nominated Deborah Newman.
Deb is the current Science Department liaison at our school, and she has been my mentor since I began my teaching career in 2022. From the very beginning, Deb has been a constant source of support, wisdom, and inspiration. Deb has been an educator for twenty-eight years, and her passion for teaching has never wavered. As educators, we often speak about the importance of being lifelong learners. While this may sound cliche, Deb embodies this belief fully. Despite her decades of experience, she continues to seek out new ways to grow, improve, and evolve alongside her students. Her commitment to staying current with educational best practices and student engagement strategies is not only admirable, but truly inspiring. Her example reminds us all that great teaching is a journey, not a destination. When I look around at my colleagues, it is Deb who I most aspire to emulate. Her energy, even after so many years in the classroom, is infectious. She leads with kindness, positivity, and a deep wealth of knowledge. Whenever I or others in our department face a challenge, Deb is there, ready to listen, to guide, and to help find constructive, thoughtful solutions. She makes you feel heard and, more importantly, understood. What truly sets Deb apart is her unwavering commitment to her students, not just academically, but personally. She shows up for them in every way. Whether it's attending their sports games, school concerts, plays, or art shows, Deb is always there cheering them on, celebrating their achievements. Her presence outside the classroom speaks volumes about how much she cares. Her students know she sees them as whole individuals, and that kind of support stays with them long after they've left her classroom. One of Deb's most impactful contributions has been the creation and development of our school's FFA program. What started as her vision has grown into a thriving, successful initiative that has touched the lives of countless students. She not only started the program, but has also mentored the educator who will be continuing her legacy, ensuring the program remains strong for years to come. Deb is a true leader, an incredible teacher, and a genuine inspiration to everyone around her. The Science Department and our entire school community will feel the impact of her absence deeply, yet her influence will continue through the many lives she has touched, mine included. I hope that years from now, I can lead and serve my students and colleagues with the same grace, passion, and commitment that Deb has shown over her remarkable twenty-eight-year career. Thank you.
Thank you, Kaylee, for your kind words. I was a Rondau student. Thomas King was my eighth-grade science teacher. He was also my mentor for student teaching, so I kind of feel like I hopefully have made him proud. So thank you very much. I'm very honored for this award.
I'd like to invite what seems to be half of the junior high for Toni Sankata. Whoever's here, you can just come up.
Good evening. Last year, I stood here and balled my eyes out talking about Tom King. This year, I'm coaching, so I have no time to think about Tom and this night. And then, my dear friend Carolyn had me go last. I think she just wanted to, like, have me sit there. And of course, Deb, talking about Tom. So any chance I get, I need to tell the Tom King story, because there won't be many more years before all of us will be retired, and nobody will be left to know the real Tom King. So, Tom King, I taught on his team for fifteen years. I was on a team with all men, and Tom was the science teacher on the team. And when Tom turned fifty-five, he, in his way, said, "I can't afford to retire." We all laughed, because Tom could afford to retire. He wasn't ready to retire. If you knew Tom, Tom was a very funny man. He always answered the phone in a funny manner and had everybody laughing. Every time he gave a test, he would tell the kids, "Charlie the Chimp scored a seventy-three on this test, so if you don't get a seventy-three and you don't beat Charlie the Chimp, it's gonna look really bad." The kids bought into every antic that Tom shared. He delivered his curriculum with humor. He established really deep relationships, and quietly, he supported every student he had. When we went on field trips, Toni and I would take the kids all over the place, and Tom would be slipping us twenties and fifty-dollar bills and make sure the kids have money to spend in the gift shop and make sure that the kids have money, but he never wanted them to know that it was he that gave that money. So Tom stayed on four more years, and one day came into the lunchroom and said, "I'm gonna retire now. They're kicking me out of here. They called me over, they want me to leave." That was a lie, but this was Tom's way of saying he was ready. Five weeks before retirement, Tom had a massive heart attack in the cemetery where he was fixing his aunt's gravestone with flowers because his cousin was coming to visit from Florida, and that was Tom. We got the news on a Sunday. It was the hardest day... Well, I look at Nanette. Who is crying? Sorry, Nanette. It was the hardest time of our career because we had to process the loss of not just somebody that was such a great mentor and colleague and dear friend, but also a teacher to so many kids. In his casket... So Tom received the first distinguished... What do we call this award? I call it the Tom King Award. I don't add any more words to it. But Tom receives it the year before his death, and... That's a piece you gotta hear. So nine of us recommend Tom for this award. Tom doesn't even pay attention to this award. He's not that kind of person, and he walks into my room and he's, "I won this award." And he's going on and on, because now he has to come out as somebody that is so amazing. As he's complaining, he looks at me and he's like, "Ah, you did it, didn't you?" There were nine of us that nominated Tom the very first year. So the year that he passed, we asked Rosario to rename it the Thomas King Award, and in his casket, his mom had hung his medal. His medal, of which Ashley Ringler, a graduate now, had designed the medal. He was so proud of Ashley. He was so excited that Ashley had designed this medal. And tonight, Ashley's aunt is one of the recipients. I can't call you gorny, because we met at Rosendale Elementary School in nineteen seventy-six. I know you don't look that old. And Kim's niece, Ashley, is the one that designed the medal. So, it really brings such joy to my heart to hear Tom talked about by so many people that have no idea who he was, what he was, but every one of you that had letters written about you, that was Tom. And you've done Tom proud, all of you, and this district continues to do Tom proud. And here I go, Toni, or as Tom would call her, Tonai. Without hesitation, I am honored to recommend Ms. Antonetta Sankata for the Thomas King Award. In the twilight of Toni's remarkable career, it would be a true oversight for Rondau not to recognize this master social studies teacher. Toni and I have been colleagues for thirty years. We grew into veteran teachers together, honing our craft side by side as eighth-grade US history educators. In our early years, we aligned our class schedules intentionally, collaborating on lessons that embraced role-playing, costumes, and project-based learning to bring history to life. One of my favorite memories is Granny's attic auction. We convinced our eighth-grade students that two grannies from the community were coming in to auction off rare, desirable items. The lesson offered an immersive experience in economics, covering concepts like scarcity, supply and demand, credit and interest, all while using real-world vocabulary from the unit. Of course, the grannies turned out to be us in costume, auctioning off treasures, like a football signed by Jim Thorpe. Not really. The students never forgot it, and neither did we. Field trips were another one of Toni's gifts. Field trips were another one of Toni's gifts. Together, through our Social Studies Club, we offered as many as six field trip options for eighth graders in a single year. These trips included visits to Ellis Island, the FDR site, and various New York City museums, experience that shaped our students' understanding of history far beyond the classroom. Toni also championed the VFW's Patriot Pen Essay Contest, inspiring her students to write with heart and purpose. Nearly every year, her students won at the local level and often advanced to the state level. Her passion even, even inspired me to get involved, and in time, she was honored by the VFW for her dedication. Toni makes history fun. She cares deeply about her students and her subject matter. Her life experiences enrich her teaching, and her love of history shines through in every lesson. Her gregarious laugh, often heard echoing through the halls, became a signature of her joyful approach to teaching. She is brilliant, deeply knowledgeable, stop crying, Toni, and deeply committed to her students and our school community. Rondell Valley has big shoes to fill. Toni has served this district with excellence, heart, and creativity. She has more than earned a retirement rich in travel and tradition. Without hesitation, I recommend, again, as Tom King affectionately calls her, Tonai, for the Thomas King Award. And I just have to thank the board and Carolyn for doing such a good job with this. I know Tom is shining down on us, and he's really proud of what you've done here.
I have promised myself that I will not cry, but I don't know that I can keep that promise. Kelly did an amazing job just talking about who Tom was. I was fortunate enough to work with him for the first 13 years of my career, so this award really means a lot to be dedicating it to Toni. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Antonetta Sincotta for this award. I have worked with Toni for the majority of my career until her move to the high school in the fall of 2022. Toni is the epitome of what a highly effective professional teacher is. She is intelligent, organized, kind, compassionate, driven, inspired, and most of all, passionate about what she teaches. Working most of her career at the middle school level, Toni understood what teaching 12- to 14-year-olds entailed and did it with grace and style. She loved her subject matter and taught social studies with innovation and creativity, engaging the students and helping them to learn with passion, too. She held the students accountable not only for their work but for appropriate and respectful behavior in her classroom. While holding them to high standards, she also understood the social-emotional needs of the students. She showed compassion for when students had life circumstances that they were faced with. As a school counselor, I know that when I, I know, I knew that when I went to Toni about a student's struggles, that she would listen and empathize while making adjustments for this student during this difficult period in their life. Toni understands that, Toni understands that she needs to know the whole child and not just the academic side of each student. She reminds me a lot of Tom King in this way. He too saw the whole child. In addition to the above, Toni went out of her way to have excellent communication with parents as well as her colleagues. The old saying, "It takes a village to raise a child," is something that she displayed in her communication with others to help students to be at their best. I would often see Toni in the counseling office consulting with us and looking over student files to better understand her students. She was highly invested in each one of her students. When I think of this award, Toni is one who comes to mind first. She worked with Tom for so many years, and they were a lot alike in their approach to education and to their students. I know that Tom would be proud to see Toni receive this award in his name. I highly recommend Toni for the Thomas King Distinguished Award, and I am proud to be able to nominate her. Thank you.
We, we had so much fun with Tom between the water gun fights, the rubber band fights, the tires rolling across the parking lot. Tom was a prank star, and we had a great time. During difficult moments, Tom was the steady rock. He was wonderful. So as much as we had a great time, he was really wonderful when times were not quite wonderful. I have been blessed to be part of the Rondell family both at the junior high and at the high school. And one of those moments happened to be a time when my older son Jack had a very critical health issue, and when I had to come back to the school from the hospital, Tom was the first to greet me and ask how I was, if I needed anything, and he was checking on me all the time. I cared very deeply for Tom, and I know that from my experience with Tom, just as my experience with my Rondell Valley family, that in good times and bad, they helped support me to be the teacher that you say that I am, and I really appreciate all of you. Thank you so very much.
It's an absolute pleasure to stand before you today to recognize someone who has not only led with wisdom and grace but has somehow done so while dodging glitter, gum under desks, and the occasional playground crisis, all before 9:00 a.m. Our incredible elementary school principal, Jackie Van Dossel, is this year's board choice recipient for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award. Now, we all know that being a principal at the elementary level is not for the faint of heart. It takes the patience of a saint, the multitasking skills of a superhero, and the stamina of someone who drinks industrial-sized Stanley water bottles without taking a bathroom break. Because let's be honest, when your day can go from a math curriculum meeting to calming a kindergartner who's lost a shoe, to discussing the meaning of life with a third grader in the same five minutes, you have to be built different. And Mrs. Van Dossel is definitely built different in the best possible way. Under her leadership, Kerrhonkson Elementary has become more than a school. It's become a true community, a place where students are known, families are welcomed, and teachers are empowered. It's not just about test scores here, which the board has taken notice of its upward trend. It's about building confidence, creativity, and kindness, one little learner at a time. But it's not just the big accomplishments that make Mrs. Van Dossel so deserving of this award. It's the small, daily acts of care and professionalism, as well as her desire to learn and accept how to be a better principal than she was the day before. We are now going to hear from those that have experienced the dedication and enthusiasm of Mrs. Van Dossel. Austin Sweeney?
We happen to be deep in a unit on opinion piece writing. In third grade, we've just learned to write a paragraph, so Austin is gonna do his best to share why he loves Ms. V. You want me to hold it for you?
Hi, my name is Austin Joseph Sweeney III. I go to Kerrhonkson Elementary School, and today I will be sharing a paragraph I made in my class about my very kind principal, Mrs. Van Dossel. This is why I love my principal, Mrs. Van Dossel. First, she is always coming up with new and funny activities for the students. For example, she dressed as an axolotl, a Mexican salamander, and she gives us ice cream parties. Second, she is always so kind. For instance, if I was having a bad day, she would help me to feel better, or if someone was upset or hurt, she would be there for them. Third, she keeps everyone safe. Specifically, she runs fire drills and lockdown drills. One last reason is she makes sure things are fair. In other words, she does no place for hate in our school. That is why I love our principal, Mrs. Van Dossel.
Next, I invite Dawn Van Kleek, former parent. Good luck beating that one, Dawn.
So I'm not gonna say anything because I think you have said everything perfectly. Mrs. Van Dossel is just what her favorite little third grader said. She was able to identify issues that my son had. She was able to let my husband and I know about these issues, make us understand, make sure that we knew it was okay and he was gonna be okay, helped us develop a plan, and did it all while letting us keep our dignity and just really the love of our students. So I couldn't thank you more for just being there for parents for, for Rondell.
Mrs. Van Dossel, your wisdom, your energy, and your genuine love for your school shines in everything you do. You make education feel joyful, meaningful, and full of possibility, not just for the students but for the staff and the entire school community. So on behalf of the Board of Education, it is my distinct honor to present this year's board choice for the Thomas King Distinguished Service Award to Jackie Van Dossel.
Oh my gosh, you guys, I, I've known so many of you for so long, and I am certainly, I don't think, somebody that's known for a lack of words, and I, I don't have very many right now. I'm very humbled by this. I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Spadero, for this honor. Serving Rondell Valley has been an absolute blessing and a pleasure and a privilege. Tending to the children at Kerrhonkson is an honor every day. I encourage all of us to remember that this is why we're here, right? We're here for the little people. We're here to do what we can to help them grow. That's why all of us are here tonight. So go Little Gander's, and we'll end it with what we always say in our morning announcements, right? Be safe, respectful, responsible. Have a safe, respectful, responsible evening, and thank you so much for this honor. I appreciate all of you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
So before we close, we invite everyone to meet us in the cafeteria for some refreshments before heading home. I know it's a school night, but please stop in. So at this time, I want to welcome Dr. Paul Spadero, our superintendent, to share just some closing remarks.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education for doing such a great job of putting the presentation together. I'd like to thank Mr. Nick Bodnar behind the scenes handling our acoustics, and Mr. Frenza, our Director of Technology. I just wanna say thank you for educating me this evening. To me, you know, being brand-new to Rondell, just Thomas King to me was just a name. I, I had no idea who he was. I didn't, I didn't know what he stood for, and to see that the impact that he had on this community, it gives me, gives me goosebumps. And you know, the hardest thing about being an educator is that it matters, and it matters every day. And what Thomas King has done for this community, he made an impact. And all the recipients that, you know, the, the tenured teachers, the retired teachers, and the, this Thomas King Award recipients today, you're making a difference. And I just want to say thank you for making impact on Rondell Valley Central School District. Thank you. Yeah, I'm about done, yeah. It's hard to follow all these up. You guys did such great speeches. But like I said, I get to privilege now to serve as your superintendent. It's great to, you know, it's been, it's a busy, it's been a busy time of year. It's been a busy month for us. The countdown is there, where, where the finish line is, is in sight, and, but just to be a part of this and to see all the smiles, all the tears, and all the great things that are taking place in our district. We're on our way to, to being a premier school district, and I thank each and every one of you, and I hope to see you all in the cafeteria. Thanks for coming out.